It's the show where Hawaii's newsmakers come to talk and to take your questions live. From the nation's capital to Honolulu Halei, from the state legislature to the fifth floor, we bring the experts to you and ask them what you want to know. Spotlight Hawaii with Yanji Denise and Ryan Palais-Suji on the digital platforms of the Honolulu Star Advertiser.
Aloha, thanks so much for joining us here on this relatively wet Wednesday as Calvin makes its way across the state. Luckily, we haven't seen too much damage from that storm and we are starting to dry out a bit here on Oahu. Ryan, this morning, we are turning our attention to a guest who we have a lot to talk about with.
Yeah, a lot happening at the city and county. And so we're going to bring in Council Chair Tommy Waters, joining us this morning once again from his office at Honolulu Halei. Good morning, Chair. Thanks so much for joining us.
Good morning to you both. Happy to be here.
You know, let's start off with the press conference that was held by the governor, really concerning affordable housing and the emergency proclamation that incorporated not only state but county leaders. I wanted to just get your general thoughts on how this will impact the city and county and the work that you folks are doing on this issue, knowing that there is a lot of overlap. There are some things that might be changed because of this emergency proclamation. What are your thoughts about this plan by the governor?
I give the governor a lot of credit. It's a very, very bold move to create an emergency proclamation for housing. And I think everyone agrees with him that it is an emergency. We need to build more affordable housing. We have people leaving our state and our island, you know, in droves, and that's really concerning. And I've said this before on your program, and I'm sorry to sound like a broken record, but I myself am the fifth of six kids all born and raised here. I'm the only one left in Hawaii. And most of the reason is because my family couldn't afford to live here. So the idea of taking a big drastic measure like this is good. However, I am cautiously optimistic, though, that basically it waives the requirement to have a hearing before the city council for 201H programs, that's the state's affordable housing law, that requires the city to waive permitting fees, sometimes up in the millions of dollars that we waive in exchange for developers to build affordable housing. The current state law says that the city council has 45 days to act on these programs. We've been getting a lot of heat from the community lately. They're saying that the 45 days isn't long enough. Well, this emergency proclamation just wipes all that out. No 45 days. Basically, the stakeholders group, if they decide that this project is a good project, it goes through. And I'm not sure there's an opportunity for the public to weigh in on that. Of course, what we do at the city council when the public weighs in, we get the developers oftentimes to do more affordable. You know, there's a price point where people, you know, affordable is a relative term. The state defines affordable for people making well over $100,000. Fact of the matter is, our city workers and state workers and most other workers here in Hawaii don't make over $100,000. So we need to build for our city workforce, police officers, teachers, lifeguards, EMS workers, things of that nature. So like I said, I'm cautiously optimistic, but we got to keep our eye on the ball and we got to make sure that that's who we're building for. Of course, developers oftentimes want to build luxury apartments because that's where the biggest profit margin is. We got to be careful not to let that happen. We really need to build more affordable. And I'm defining it as workforce housing, really.
I want to ask you also about the environmental concerns. Wayne Tanaka, speaking from the Sierra Club of Hawaii, had expressed some criticism, even though he is part of that working group and he will have a seat at the table. But that is a majority rule, basically. You know, if the rest of the council or the rest of that group says this project should be developed, then things can go forward, even if Mr. Tanaka or other environmentalists have some trepidations or some concerns. What are your thoughts about if there will be enough to protect the environment and some of the regulations that are waived in that regard?
Oh, I agree with Mr. Tanaka. We should be concerned about that. Although the governor did say when it comes to evi kupuna, which means bones that are found, that you absolutely have to stop work and make sure you take care of that. But what about other cultural sites? Aheia, does that mean now you can just bulldoze a heia and put up a building? Of course, we just need to be vigilant and make sure that stuff like that does not happen.
With the regards to just continuing on in this conversation with this emergency proclamation, were you involved in any of these initial discussions? How collaborative was the governor's administration with reaching out to stakeholders such as yourselves in the city council, knowing that this would have an impact? How much of a say did you have in some of the planning that went into this working group?
Personally, I had no input at all. But I do know that the mayor did have input. And I work really well with the mayor. And, you know, I trust him and I know his heart is in the right place. And he's fully supportive of the emergency proclamation. Our housing chair, Matt Wire, was part of the discussion. So while I personally was not part of that, we did have representation from the city.
Sticking with the subject of housing and something that you do have a lot of input on, that's a new bill that you proposed with Councilmember Tyler Dosantis-Tam to try to limit some of these monster homes that are seeming to get through and getting permitted despite obviously not being allowed in some neighborhoods. Tell us about, you know, what this law that you're proposing would do. This is involving making false statements to city officials.
So there already is a law on the books saying that you cannot make a false statement to Department of Permanence and Planning. What we're finding is, and there's a recent appeal where these monster homes in Sierra Drive were shut down. I went and watched the entire hearing myself. And what the developer did was they put up their draftsman, who was unlicensed, right? And basically not even from Hawaii, who submitted the plans. And it's a defense for the owner to say, well, I didn't know. It was my draftsman who put in the fake illegal plans. And we're simply saying, well, whether it's you, the developer, or you, the draftsman, if the draftsman, you hired the draftsman to do this, you're still liable for this. Because we're seeing it all the time where these monster homes are being built and they're not complying with the law because the paperwork that they submit to DPP complies with the law. But what's actually being built does not comply with the law. And what we're talking about is setbacks and the amount of bathrooms and wet bars and bedrooms and things like that. You know, it's not the same as what they submit. And we're saying, that's a lie. If you do that, you know, you get in trouble. And that's really what it does. I think there's a lot of confusion. People are concerned that it's vague. But it really is, we defined if it's an inspector. If you're lying to an inspector, not any city employee. But having said that, nobody should be lying anyway, right? I don't know why people are concerned. Don't lie. Simple golden rule. Don't lie. In this case, it makes it a crime if you lie.
Well, the department that is involved in that, as you mentioned, is DPP. And this is a department that has faced much criticism, much frustration by individuals and those who are waiting for those permits. Wanted to get your thoughts on the progress the department has made. Are you satisfied with some of the progression that they have made, knowing that there continues to be that backlog? And what the director has done to sort of alleviate some of the concerns that you've no doubt heard from your constituents as well?
Well, first, with regard to monster homes, our director, Dawn Takeuchi Apuna, is fantastic, right? She reviews the plans herself oftentimes. By the way, my office, we would order the plans and review them ourselves, point out the deficiencies, send it over to DPP, and nothing used to happen. Under this director, she takes it very, very seriously and is starting to shut down these illegal developments, right? Just in Kamaki, up the street from my house, they got three houses, four actually sitting there because they were being built illegally, right? Dawn Apuna actually just took the ability for a third-party reviewer to be reviewing these monster homes because they did it wrong, right? I often wondered, how the heck did we keep allowing these big old monster homes to be built when it's obvious they don't comply with the law? Well, this director and this mayor has made it a point to shut them down. And that's what I'm saying. Currently, they're appealing the director's decision. And I've watched the appeal and I hope the Building Board of Appeals does the right thing. They all seem very attentive. There was like eight commissioners there, which was really good. As far as permits in general, I'm still getting complaints about the time that it takes for the permits to go through. But again, I do have confidence in this director. She is modernizing DPP and hopefully shaking things up a little bit there to get these permits out quicker. I continue to believe, though, we need to pay these people more money, right? These plan reviewers are making anywhere from $35,000 to $55,000 a year. You know, and again, as we mentioned, that's not enough to own a home and stay here and work. So that's part of the problem, I think. Citywide, you know, we have 3,000 vacancies across the whole city. 380 vacant uniformed police officers. How do we incentivize people to come to the city and work? And one is, we got to increase the pay. And two, I believe, provide housing opportunities for them.
Sticking with the subject of housing, you've had some pretty contentious city council meetings of late with residents who will be displaced to allow for higher density housing to be built. People saying that, you know, don't tear down the walk-up that I have now to make way for a high-rise because what happens to the families who are, you know, who are then displaced? I can think of several developments that are currently in process that will, you know, have some growing pains, if you will, and will displace families along the way to make way for this. You know, given that the governor has now signed this and we are going to see a lot more development, talk about, you know, what those meetings have been like on your end and how you're receiving those complaints from those residents?
Yes, specifically, I think you're talking about Kui Lake Place, which is on Kapilani Boulevard, on the Wiley Avenue end of Kapilani Boulevard. And basically, there's 128 units currently there, as you mentioned, their walk-ups. It was a difficult decision, to be honest. People who grew up in that area and that neighborhood did not want it to be changed. However, what is going to be built there is 604 affordable units. 604 affordable units. So while, you know, it's a tough call, but we're exchanging 128 units for 604 units. So that's the number one thing. Number two, one of the things that I'm really impressed about this project is they're reusing the gray water on site. For example, the water that you brush your teeth or take a bath with, that's going to be processed and used in your toilets that you're going to flush. As far as I know, this is the first project on this island that's going to do that. You know, I toured the wastewater treatment plant two weeks ago and I was told that in order to upgrade the wastewater treatment plant to secondary treatment, they're going to have to raise all of our sewer fees. And of course, remember when the city wanted to raise fees for your garbage pickup? Everybody went ballistic. And what we got to do is find other solutions where we can deal with our wastewater. And this project, the Kui Lake Place, does that. I'd like to see this work and that all projects going forward do that as well. And hopefully that defrays from the cost of upgrading San Island Treatment Center to secondary treatment.
Want to switch gears here and talk about Skyline. Of course, there was a lot of buzz when the rail opened its doors and allowed riders on and saw a great first weekend with a lot of those free riderships and free transportation opportunities for the public to really engage in this new mode of transportation. Since then, the numbers have dipped down since requiring those payments. Are you concerned at all about the ridership numbers now? And just want to get your overall thoughts on where the project is at this point, knowing that there is still much work to be done. But your general thoughts about where things are at right now with ridership and overall the experience?
I think that was expected, that ridership would go down. Of course, the first initial opening, it was free. Now people actually have to pay for it. But I've been told dozens of times already how it's already cut people's commute time. And I've written it myself. It's super easy. You can take work on the train and work on your laptop or read a book or whatever it is. And it's comfortable. It's clean. It's air-conditioned. I believe, once we get to the airport, it's going to explode, right? Right now, it does link the community colleges and UH West Oahu, which is great. And I think when school starts, there's going to even be more ridership there. But I think it's going to be a game changer once we get to the airport, which should be done in less than two years. I keep teasing Lori Kayakina that, no, 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 not two years. Less than two years. Because it really will be a game changer. And then when it comes into downtown, I think even then, there'll be even more ridership. But again, the whole idea was to build more housing along the rail line. That coupled with the emergency proclamation, and I hope they focus on building housing along the rail line. That way, you don't need a car, right? You can hop down the train and get to work and back home. I also like the idea of, just like in Japan, in the rail stations where they have actual supermarkets and places to eat. And that, we don't see that currently. But I'd love to see that down the Dillingham corridor and even downtown. To me, that would be a game changer.
The rail is going to cost about $75 million for the city to operate. This is a new expense. You know, ridership was never, you know, in most systems doesn't pay for that. We know that ridership, even for the bus, which has plenty of riders, doesn't cover the cost of operating the bus system here in the city and county of Honolulu. But, you know, what are your concerns or do you have concerns about that $75 million expense? And whether it will ultimately be worth it on an annual basis, given that that is quite a bit of money?
Oh, yeah. I worry about things like that all the time. But as you mentioned, we do subsidize the bus. We subsidize Handy Van, incredible amount of subsidies for Handy Van because people need this service and they like this service. So while it is daunting at times, I think it's necessary. And the Department of Transportation Services worked really hard to link the bus to the rail line. So at this point, while I maybe can't take you all the way to Ala Moana, as an example, you can get off the rail line, hop on the bus, and finish your journey. But again, to me, it's a worthwhile expense, especially if we can build TOD, transit-oriented development, and get people out of their cars. Anybody who spends any time driving into town from the west side or Eva Beach knows exactly what I'm talking about. But the idea, you got to make it convenient for people to ride. And until it gets to the airport and beyond, I don't think we're going to see that big of a ridership jump other than the students who are linking the community colleges.
Well, we know the mayor also shares your enthusiasm with that airport opening up. And, you know, we talked to him on this program and he also said that he believes that that will also be a significant moment for this project. Speaking of that conversation with the mayor, one of the things that he also mentioned was putting together the next budget that he will be already formulating and submitting to the council. And one of the things that he had talked about is a more permanent tax relief sort of program. We know that you've advocated for this in the past. What would you like to see or would you encourage the mayor to consider in terms of some form of permanent tax relief for residents?
You know, thank you. You know, the mayor and I have been talking about this a lot in his administration with Andy Kowano, head of Budget and Fiscal Services. And we worked really well together. And in fact, I'm happy to report that today at 2:30, the mayor's having a press conference where he's going to sign Bills 37 and Bill 40. This is legislation introduced by my vice chair, Esther Kia Aina, basically providing long-term tax relief. Bill 37 says that if you make $80,000 or less, your tax is capped at 3% of your income. Now, we've had this on the books for a long time. It was $65,000 or less. But only 3,500 people took advantage of this. So I'm hoping by raising that threshold, we'll get more families involved and taking this tax credit. That's Bill 37. Bill 40, which the mayor's going to sign today as well, that will increase your homeowner's exemption from $100,000 to $120,000. And for kupuna, from $140,000 to $160,000. And that is long-term. And it is costing the city a lot of money and lost revenue, but you know what? It's worth it. We heard from the people who said, you know, it's expensive to live here and we need to have long-term tax relief. That coupled with the one-time $350 tax credit in Bill 14 that the mayor introduced and we supported, you know, I think will provide significant relief. But as far as next year and the out years, I look forward to working with the mayor again and Budget and Fiscal Services to come up with even more relief for our folks who need it the most.
I mean, it is complicated because you want to offer tax relief, but then we have, you know, a $75 million increase right off the bat with Skyline. And then you spoke about wanting to increase city wages to try to bring in more employees. What level do you think would be appropriate to raise those salaries so that they could, you know, those folks who work for the city can afford to live here? I mean, when you think about the level that they're getting paid now, what you laid out, the increase would have to be pretty significant to meet what, you know, what the standard is here in Honolulu?
I mean, there lies the difficulty in this job, right? We want to make sure that we provide our basic core services to the public and make it at a reasonable cost. But at the same time, again, if we don't pay our city workers an adequate wage, we're not going to have city workers anymore. So we got to get creative in figuring out different ways of generating revenue, right? Right now, the city's main way of generating revenue is through your real property taxes. You know, every year I go to the legislature and I ask for more authority, right? For example, why can't we charge a little bit more for tourists to use our scenic sites, right? Raise the fee on our visitors so that local people, we can lower it. I still advocate for a vacancy tax. You still got a lot of outside investors coming to Hawaii. In Kahala, where I represent, you know, I was walking door to door in Kahala and there's a vacant home after vacant home after vacant home. And these are outside investors who know our property rate is amongst the lowest in the country. And they just park their money here. And in a few years, if the property value goes up, $100,000, $200,000, $300,000, they sell and make a whole lot of money. And that doesn't really benefit anyone. I'm saying, e komo mai, come, invest your money here, but we're going to charge you a little bit more, right? Koko'a, local people, by paying a little bit higher tax. We also created a new tax category for short-term rentals. We still have a bunch of legal short-term rentals and they were taxed at the same rate as everybody else. But when you have a hotel in a neighborhood, residential neighborhood, we want to tax you more, right? You're putting a burden on your neighbors by having people coming in and out. And the thought there is, okay, you're legal, you're grandfathered in since 1989, but you're going to have to pay a little bit higher tax rate. Things of that nature, you know, trying to think out of the box how we can generate revenue without hurting our local people and our local economy.
Well, another issue that has made headlines is the impact of fentanyl in our community. And we know that the city council recently passed a law that would allow some of the establishments, bars and restaurants to require Narcan to help combat those who may be suffering from a fentanyl overdose to just help with some of the overdoses that we've been seeing in our community. There were some concerns from restaurateurs and those who own the establishments that they are now being required to recognize what a fentanyl overdose looks like. Your thoughts about this requirement overall, why you felt it was important to advocate for Narcan in these establishments?
Well, the idea is to get Narcan in as many hands as we can where people go, right? Because it works. And when I talk to the emergency responders who are dealing with folks who are overdosing on fentanyl, it's a really, really scary thing. You know, I get that the bars and establishments don't want to do it. But really, we're asking to carry two under the counter. In the event that this happens, they'll be ready to do it. To me, it's not a huge thing. If on a scale of one to 10, it's a two. That's not a 10. It's going to be hard to enforce, to be honest, right? We're going to have the liquor inspectors go in there and let me see your Narcan. That could happen. We'll see. But fentanyl is real. It's deadly. And we need to do everything we can to make sure we can try to keep our people safe. Our ambulance drivers, and I believe our firefighters too, carry with them everywhere they go. You know, they've told me, Dr. Ireland said, that sometimes just one won't work. They have to blast the person with two. And that's, that's just scary. But while we're on the subject of crime, you know, I'm really concerned. There's a rash of break-ins, car break-ins in my neighborhood. And it was on the news last night. And that's why the council is making public safety a priority this year in this year's budget. We increased Homeland Police Department's budget by $42 million, pretty much unheard of, right? And bump from what it was two years ago at $298 million up to $352 million over the last two years. We've increased it that much. And one of the things we really want to see is more patrol officers, right? I often say this, a patrolling police officer is the best deterrent to crime, right? Even a law-abiding citizen going 20 miles an hour is going to press on your brake when you see a police officer behind you. Same thing with criminals. If they see that blue light coming, they go someplace else. So it really is our hope that this increase in funding for HPD will result in a lower crime rate. I do also want to talk about Safe and Sound in Waikiki, if you guys don't mind.
Please go ahead.
So, you know, one of the things that the city is doing, because we have a shortage of police officers, they've hired a private security company. That's one thing that they did. And I believe it's a lot of either off-duty or retired police officers who are doing it. But we also did geographic restrictions in Waikiki and downtown, for that matter. So if you get caught for committing a crime, the judge will order you, you cannot come back here during the pendency of your case or even as a part of your probation. And it's really working, right? I got the stats right here, right? Motor vehicle theft, down 21%. Theft in general, down 10%. Burglaries, unauthorized motor vehicle, unauthorized entry into motor vehicle, down 26%. So it's working, right? And I'm so happy that HPD and the city are working together to try to stem crime. This is just in Waikiki, though. We need to do this island-wide, right? Island-wide. People aren't feeling safe in their homes. People aren't feeling safe walking their dogs. So my hope really is that working with HPD, we can get them out there and working to fight crime.
Those private security firms that are hired, is that part of HPD's budget or does that come out of the city? How does that work?
You know, that was financed through the American Rescue Plan money. This is federal dollars that came to the city to deal with COVID. And in my mind, it is, it is still COVID-related. We're still protecting Waikiki or visitor industry. We're still recovering from the COVID epidemic. So, yeah, this is federal dollars that are being used.
Before, we only have a few minutes left, but I just wanted to give you a chance to bring up a subject that was really contentious at times. And that's regarding the salary increases for council members. We saw some council members push back on these raises. Your overall thoughts now that this has moved through and how this played out publicly and some of the pushback that you guys may have gotten for this? Your thoughts overall on how things have settled through?
It still is an issue for some folks. But, you know, I have to reiterate what I've been saying all along. Council members or any elected official really should not be placed in the position of voting on their own race or their own increase. To me, it's just, it's a conflict of interest, really. We're not supposed to be voting on anything that affects us personally, right? That's just common sense. And for us to be placed in that position, we really should look at changing how the whole system works, right? Whether it be how the Salary Commission works, who's appointed to the Salary Commission, and whether or not that should even come to the council. Now, having said that, I'm consistent in the sense that really, you got to pay a living wage to everyone across the board so that everyone can live, work, and be productive here and raise their families here. And I'm hoping that that works for the city council as well. And by raising the pay, and by the way, this was a one time salary adjustment. I don't anticipate this ever happening again. And over the last nine, 30 years, 19 times, the city council has rejected it. It was a very, very difficult stance to take. But ultimately, I'm fighting for the future, fighting for future people who would hopefully try to do this job. You know, two years ago, I was thinking about running for Congress. And I wanted to find a replacement for for my seat. And I asked a bunch of people to do it. And most of them said, Tommy, I can't do it. Can't afford to do this. I have a family. I have a mortgage to pay. And I simply would love to to do this job, but I simply can't afford to do it. And that really, you know, had an impression on me. So my hope really is, going forward, we get young people who otherwise wouldn't do this job, who can now afford to do this job, afford to raise a family, afford to pay their mortgage and really dedicate their lives to public service.
We've gone over time. We appreciate your time this morning. We covered a lot of ground and we really appreciate it. Council Chair Tommy Waters, thanks so much for being here this morning.
Thank you. Good to see you both.
Thanks, aloha.
Well, very interesting discussion today. We started off, we we spent a lot of time talking about housing, just in different iterations. His reaction, of course, to the governor's emergency proclamation that was released yesterday around the issue of housing, really cutting what the governor calls a lot of red tape, a lot of regulations. Council chair there were expressing some concerns when it comes to the permitting process and getting rid of these permitting fees for developers, which can, he said, run into the millions of dollars and just the oversight that he worries about that could be lost. Right now, it takes about 45 days for projects of a certain scale to be approved. He says that residents have already told him that's not enough time for them to have these hearings and and to really make their voices heard and perhaps perhaps slow down that process or increase fees, make changes. But under this emergency proclamation, that time gets cut down, those fees go away. And so he says he's cautiously optimistic, but generally supportive of what the governor did.
Yeah, and you really heard that theme throughout our interview of the chair pushing for this, really just this idea of this affordable housing and just the importance of it in various sectors. We talked about Skyline and the anticipated launch and the where the project stands right now. You also heard about him talking about transit oriented development around the rail lines, where he would like to see more affordable housing options, noting that this emergency proclamation could help specifically in those areas to help to speed along the process for some of those developments along the rail line, which would help ridership, he says, in the long term. He also believes that once Skyline is open to the airport, that that will be a game changer in terms of the availability that and service that it will provide to those residents who are trying to make their way to the airport and into town from the west side of the island. We also heard his thoughts about where things stand with crime. A lot of talk about just the amount of money that the council is pouring into HPD to help to support higher salaries for police officers, recruitment overall, and how he says public safety will be a focus of the city council moving forward, noting that there are some, of course, crime and a lot of issues that are happening within the community. But the council really making that a focus here as they move into this next fiscal year.
Yeah, and he talked, you know, addressing the issue of that 64% pay raise that the council did receive. That was a recommendation from the Salary Commission that the council then allowed to pass without voting on it. There's a lot of back and forth on the council itself and of course, in the community about such a large salary increase. He noted that over the years, they really haven't had a lot of salary increases and that it has, you know, the the pay has not kept up with the level of the job and just the, you know, what goes into it and just how hard it is. So he said it was difficult, but he ultimately thinks it's the right thing and that it will attract better folks to run for these offices in the first place. He also talked about how he wants to increase salaries across the board for the city. The city facing some pretty dire vacancy numbers there. Every time we have the mayor on, he echoes the same thing, saying that he wants to do more recruitment. And of course, the issue of retention there too. It's not just HPD, it is really citywide. Some departments have 40% vacancies and city services just can't get done. You know, the the things that they need to do just can't get done when you look at those kind of vacancies. We didn't get a number on just how much he'd like those increases to be. But he says he's looking for creative ways for the city to generate more revenue, perhaps taxing tourists at a higher rate and looking at other ways so that they can try to pay people more at the city.
Yeah, we also heard his thoughts about where DPP stands right now, saying that the director is doing a fantastic job in helping his cause and his efforts to crack down on monster homes and some of the loopholes that have been created through the permitting process, but noting that there still continues to be constituents and those in the community who continue to be concerned about the wait time for some of those permits, but noting that things are improving. And he looks to continue to hope to find ways to help streamline that process. And again, some of that will also come from finding workers who will hopefully be attracted to the job with a higher rate. So a lot to talk about, always with Tommy Waters. We encourage you, if you miss any portion of this interview, to go back and catch the rebroadcast later this evening on Channel 50. You can also listen to it as a podcast or catch it again on the platforms of the Honolulu Star advertiser. On Friday, we'll be switching gears and talking to a representative from Alaska Airlines.
That's right. We want to focus in on them. They, of course, have plenty of direct flights to the state. And it's always interesting to get a take from industry, you know, from the business sector about tourism in our state. Of course, a lot of changes at the Hawaii Tourism Authority this last legislative session. We know that John de Vries is leaving, you know, just to get their take on that those moves over there and also how the summer is shaping up when it comes to arrivals. Alaska actually has opened up a new route starting in November, a second direct flight from another airport out of the Seattle area. So why they've chosen to add that new route and what we can look forward to from that airline. We're covering all of that on Friday at 10:30. And we hope to see you right back here then.
We'll see you then. Aloha.